Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Progress.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Art Whitman, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:32 on October 17th, 2022. Is there any conflict of interest or anything shown on the agenda?
No.
I have a conflict in that I will be turning the meeting over to Joe when the opening of the bids for the gravel hauling command. Okay? Minutes. We have minutes from our October 3 meeting. Everybody was here. I did find a mistake. Do I tell you what the mistake is?
Yeah, just put it in a minute's.
Okay. The very first one is that I did not... It says that I said I was the only one bidding on the gravel, and that's not true. There were several other people that were given the chance to bid. In fact, somebody else did bid, okay? And on the last... Next, the last paragraph, it says, "The dog kennel is under construction. Hitting will be provided to the animals." The word "to" is missing, that's all. I made references to both of these. So, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. We have two payroll warrants. Payroll warrant number seven, we have them first, for $25,037.31.
So moved.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. The next payroll warrant is payroll warrant number 7A, for a total of $331.23.
Moved.
Moved by Mike. Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. And last, we have check warrant number 10, for $52,927.49.
So moved.
Moved by Joe. Second by Mike. Items over $1,000. It's the old Delurys, $1,284.28. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $6,844.58. BearCom, $2,112.
That's Fire Department Communications Department.
Bennington County Sheriff's, $1,040. Bennington Tire, $1,290. Another Bennington Tire, $1,547. Cartographic Technologies, $2,400.
That's the town mapping program.
How often do we pay that?
Once a year. And they're doing a lot of effort work for us to try to bring the maps up to date.
Befrains Group, $1,430.
That's part of a grant.
GA Bow Fuel, $1,874. Another for Bow Fuel, $1,500. Innovative Surface Solutions for $4,854. RCS Consulting, $1,009.25. Saunders Transmission Service, that's for the pickup truck, $8,059.18. Sullivan and Powers for Auditors.
Our Auditors here. And I'm going to correct one thing. Befrains is our expert for our lawsuit with North Bennington. So that's what that bill is for, not for the two projects they're working on.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Okay. This time, there's public comments. Anybody from the public?
Announcements first, Art.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, announcements. The only announcement I have is that with Halloween coming up, we probably will be closing down Cleveland Avenue again, as usual. That'll be actually part of a vote later on in this business session today. But if you're wondering about Cleveland Avenue, it'll be closed for Halloween on Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday this year, yes. I have a brief announcement just prior to the meeting. The state informed us that we received a maximum grant for recreation for $25,000. So that'll go a long way to getting all the work done at Howard Park. Unfortunately, not this year, but next year.
Any other announcements? Okay. Treasurers' report?
Sorry, I forgot the... Can I go back to the public comment or question?
Yes.
It's just a quick question. With us going back into the fall... Well, we're in the fall, I'm sorry. With us walking into winter, is the town... For like meetings and stuff, are... What are we doing, thinking of wearing masks again if we come to Kohol? Like, what... Do you know what the... I mean, is there any kind of...
As far as I know, the state... We are going by state recommendations, and the state does not require us to have masks in public meetings if you feel uncomfortable. In fact, there is somebody here that is wearing a mask, that's absolutely fine. But it is not required because we're following state recommendations.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to just double check and see what that was. So thanks for explaining.
Is there anybody else?
Okay, hello, everybody.
Hey, Dave.
Let's take a look at cash flow first, please. As you can see...
Yes.
Pretty big number for taxes received this month. Luckily, I can report that the problems I was having with the bank are largely resolved. At least, I'm able to scan checks again, so that's hallelujah. So I'm able to keep on top of the checks people are mailing to me or bringing in. Today, we got our highway state aid, that's the other big number there. The clerk revenue, that's obviously an accumulation of a couple of months. It's while the bank was... While I was going through my problems with the bank, I did fall behind with the transfer station money and the clerk for who's basically just dealing with the bank all day, every day. So I think that's pretty much all of interest there on the revenue side. And then, there's no surprises on the expenditure side. Those are just the warrants used side. So you can see our cash balance is as healthy as it usually is this time of year. Today is the last day to get in a homestead declaration. If you didn't get it in, you're not going to be able to anymore. So I hope that people didn't have... People who had sticker shock when they opened their tax bill and they've been calling me in great numbers, today is the last day to make that correction. I don't know why so many people missed it this year. But I hope that everybody took my advice and opened their tax bill, even if they have an escrow company, because a lot of people got shocked when they looked at their bill, because they had not done their homestead declaration this year. So, yeah, I just... You'll have to go back to it, Dave. But I'm not... I was not able to give the end of month report for September because all of the historical reporting in the bank has still not come through. So I'm not able to do reconciliations yet either. They keep promising it, I'm hoping it'll come soon. But so that's the last piece of the bank acquisition that has not yet come to fruition, is that I don't have any historical information or any... The month of September does not have a bank statement associated with it. Okay, looking at the reserve funds here, you can see that there are only two numbers on the receipt side. The credits was a little bit of water and a whole lot of ARCA funding that you can see down at the 900 line. We got another $300,000 from ARCA, which I... We knew we were getting it, right?
That's the last one. That's it?
Is that...
That's it.
Yeah. So we knew that that was coming, and now it has. So you can see our balance there...
Yeah, at the top.
Is just over a million dollars.
Million... $24,000.
So just a reminder, taxes are due November 10th. I've got people...
What day of the week is that?
I think it's... I think it's Thursday this year. I'm sorry. I should know that. I actually have my phone here.
We just want to make sure everybody else knows.
I believe it's going to be the same date for Bennington and North Bennington this year. We all coordinated it every week.
November 10th, you said?
Yeah.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday, November 10th.
Thursday, November 10th. I will get the sign out at the corner, just so people are aware of that. I'm having people paying online. Every day, two or three of those are coming through. I'm really glad to see people using that. I'll remind you to use the e-check option, which is a bank transfer. If you can, use that. It's a flat dollar 50, otherwise, there's a fairly hefty fee associated with it. I think that's all I can say. Any questions on any of that? Mostly with you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to the proposed ordinance on the firearms. We left it tabled. We need a motion to bring it back to our table. Take it off the secretary's table, so to speak, bring it back to us. And then we also then have to have a motion to pass it. That way, we can discuss it, okay?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to untable the firearms ordinance?
Okay, second.
We have a motion to untable the firearms ordinance by Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Tony, is he muted? Is Tony still there?
He's there.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Now, we really... To discuss it, we really need to have a motion to pass it.
All right, I'll make a motion to pass the Shasberry Firearms Ordinance.
Okay, second.
Second by... That's a motion by Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? This is where the discussion comes in.
We need a vote on that.
Okay.
Because you're making a motion... Oh, sorry. Discussion got ahead of us all.
We need to have discussion. Okay, so the way it's come about is that it's come to our attention that the original ordinance included what is formerly known as the Fire and Light District, which included some of the land that Dave... Dave Mance was concerned about that would make it so nobody could hunt squirrels or anything like that in the woods down behind his house that goes all the way down into a wetland, also butts up to industrial zone, and so on, so forth. Come to find out, that's been an ordinance for 47 years, so we aren't adding anything new to it. But it's also come to our attention that this district splits the trailer park. So what our... One of our proposals is to pass this ordinance the way it's written and go to the zoning board... I'm sorry, go to the planning board with recommendations to change some zoning lines, to pull it back so we don't have Village Residential all the way down into a swamp, but also straighten out around the trailer park so that it's not splitting where one person is in Village Residential and the other person isn't. So that person just outside the line could shoot, type of thing. So there's a lot to it. So, Joe, you want to make any comments about what we're talking about?
About the ordinance? The only thing that... My only concern was there was one section in there that also included like the use of BB guns or pellet rifles, things like that, which is not a firearm, per se. It's not discharged by a power...
The definition... In Section 3 definition, firearms shall mean any pistol, revolver, shotgun, rifle, or other device which is designed... Which by design uses an explosive charge. Then it says, "Or compressed gas to discharge a projectile," which is...
An air rifle.
Air rifle or something like that. As you pointed out, some people like to practice with BB gun in the backyard.
They point it in the backyard. It's always been like a father-son, father-daughter thing that people do. And a lot of people enjoy it. And it doesn't make a lot of noise, so it's not like, you know, something noisy of the neighbors, "Oh, God, they're doing that again." It's very quiet, and it's fun. My daughter and I, for one, we like to do it, so we enjoy it a lot.
Anybody?
No, the only thing I just wanted to...
You're going to need to speak up so that...
Yeah, please, please.
Please state your name, officer.
My name is Darrell Wedderell. Live on Cleveland Avenue. No, I just wanted to... We definitely do need this ordinance, without a doubt. My only concern is there are a few issues with the boundaries that I think, as you just stated, are going to be taken up with the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission has... Starts the process. It's a very lengthy process. It has to go before the voters and everything, but...
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's a couple of issues with the boundaries, specifically down where I am, that need to really be looked at in that area, and...
Where are you on Cleveland?
I'm way down on the southern south end of Cleveland Avenue, right on the corner there. Kind of houses up and back a little bit.
On the graveyard side, or are you talking Church Street side?
No, on the southern end of Cleveland Avenue. I don't know how to explain it any better than that. I'm on 53, which is right on the... If you were coming in off Route 7.
Past the graveyard?
Yeah, come down past the graveyard, and there's the sharp corner right there. I'm in that house.
Oh, okay.
In the back.
Okay.
Yeah, no. Firearms Ordinance itself is, you know, I hunted down in that area for years. I stopped hunting a few years ago. I don't hunt anymore, too tired of it. And I used to shoot back there, behind that area. But since the development of the mobile home park, I stopped. Because kids play in there, and so I stopped that. However, I still do, like you were just saying, playing with the grandkids. But, you know, there's a couple of aspects of that that I stopped. Number one, that issue being safety and the noise. Even as it is now, the ordinance with the lines, although I have to do a step over that line legally, and I can fire target shoot a lot of rounds, and I'm only 150 feet from my neighbor's home. So those lines have to be looked at a little bit.
Sure.
And, you know, we have to take into consideration there's the frost trail down there, too, that needs to be looked at. That's all I have.
But how do you feel about the air rifles?
I'm not... I'm not concerned about that at all.
It's not even a... I mean, it's not even like a thing where people are vandalizing property.
No, no, no. You know? No, air rifles. I have, like I said, air rifles myself.
They're fun.
They're fun. Providing you use common sense.
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Does not say everybody has that.
Unfortunately, no.
So, no, that's my only thing, is that hunting is not the issue. The issue with me would be the target shooting. You know, like I think Dave Mance mentioned, it lasts me one or three rounds, and it's done. Target shooting with a rifle or something like that can mean anything from one round to over 100, you know? And at that point, it becomes a nuisance.
Especially if it's a high-powered rifle.
Well, you know, the average high-powered rifle was 167 decibels. You shoot that off 150 feet from somebody's house, if they're in there, if elderly people with health condition or something.
Oh, yeah. Scare them.
Yeah, exactly. So that's all I want to say about those lines there. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Darrell, for coming.
Thank you.
Does anybody on Zoom have any comments?
I don't see any indication of it.
So we have a motion to move this, but if you want to do some more work on it, we can vote.
Well, what you can do is Mike made the motion. Mike can make a motion to ask permission to withdraw the motion, and then we can reintroduce it at a later date. And that's by consent.
So I can make a motion to withdraw the ordinance in order to rework the definition of the compressed gas to discharge a projectile line in Section 3?
And that's just by consent?
It's by consent.
So, Tony, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Joe? I'm fine. So the motion is still tabled? Is that the right terminology?
This motion is withdrawn. The object is still active. It's just been withdrawn for this meeting.
Okay.
To be reworked.
All right. Okay. There is a DPW report, which we'll hear first, and then I'll turn the meeting over to Joe, and he'll open up the bids.
Okay, for the next two weeks, we're doing a lot of hazard tree cutting on Airport Road. Jim White has surveyed and done the town roads a couple of years ago. Airport Road has quite a number of these trees that are in the worst condition. So over the next two weeks, there'll be some delays on Airport Roads. They cut down hazard trees. Shasberry Hollow, East Road, and Cider Mill are due for grading. Culvert work on Cider Mill Road. Culverts on Cold Spring, it's finished a drainage project for the springtime. Getting the plowing equipment, continuing to get the plowing equipment ready. Hidden Valley and Birch Hill are going to be paved on October 20th and 21st. So we put notices up. If you're on those streets, there will be some work on both those streets. Birch Hill completely paved, and all the paved area of Hidden Valley. Roadside mowing continues all over the east side of town. If you remember, we got our mower pretty late, with a long delay in getting it delivered to us. So we're kind of mowing later than usual, but it's getting done. And we're also trying to get in... We have a little list to do, things for the cemetery, repair a stone wall on Tunick, re-roof a little shed, some driveway work to Center Cemetery, and a few tree trimmings, as I can get to those, because we still have a lot of projects going on. So that's what they'll be up to for the next two weeks. If anyone has any questions?
When's the airport road gonna...
That's underway now. They started that today. And there are quite a number of trees on there, so we'll be taking a lot of those down.
May I ask a question? Dave, when did you say that Hidden Valley Road and Birch Hill will be paved?
The 20th and the 21st.
Okay. Thanks.
That's the bid that we took a couple of weeks ago for Springfield? He was in the area? This is working perfect?
Yeah. And we'll get it done before the paving plan closes down for the year. It'll make the roads much easier to plow, especially Birch Hill when it's fixed, so...
Okay. Okay, this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Joe. Here's the two bids, and I'll go sit in the audience.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the bid from Weaver Excavating. There we go. All right, you gave me a dull night. Okay, you just read this out?
Yeah, there's certain aspects I need to read.
Okay, so this bid is from Weaver Excavating Incorporated to the Town and Shasberry Highway Department. The project is hauling aggregate, trucking material from Wallingford, Vermont to Shasberry, Vermont. $13 per... $13 per ton. Thank you for your consideration. Fred J. Weaver, President.
Well, so that's, are we allowed to ask what the bid is?
Could you wait until we open the bids and then take it out?
Oh, sure, yep, sure.
Okay, this next bid is from AK LLC North Bennington. The hauling bid, AK Agro Services LLC submits a bid of $9.75 a ton of aggregate, hauled from Wallingford Crush Stone to pile at Town Highway Garage, North Shasberry. This price is good until October 31st, 2024. Douglas Jessman. Okay. So...
You can make a motion to accept one of the bids and then have discussion after the motion is made.
Do I hear a motion to accept a little bit?
Sure, I can make a motion to accept the bid from AK Agro Services for nine, was it $9.75?
$9.75 a ton.
Need a second?
I made the motion to... Tony, if you... We hear a second, Tony?
Yes, second, sorry.
It's okay.
And any discussion? I've just answered a question that came in from the public. All the bids were due to be sealed by 3 o'clock last Thursday to me.
Just got, I mean, this bid is substantially less, we got $13 a ton from one bidder and $9.75 for a ton, so it's for me a simple, simple question.
So do I hear a motion to accept the bid from AK Agro Services LLC with a bid of $9.75 a ton?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that would be 3-0-0. And we will award the contract to AK Agro Services.
Just leave those on the side for me.
Just ask me to come in.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Given the conversation we had at the last meeting, since now the board is choosing to award a bid to a board member, what was the conversation you had about conflict of interest?
I didn't, the last part...
The last part was garbled, could you repeat that?
Sure. I said now that the, now that the board is choosing to award this contract to a board member, what was the conversation that you had around conflict of interest?
Actually, we awarded the contract to the AK Agro Services LLC.
Uh-huh.
And this was signed by Douglas Jessman.
Uh-huh.
And it's for $9.75 a ton versus $13 per ton. So I think it would be in the best financial interest of the taxpayers to go with the $9.75 a ton.
So you're saying that you're awarding it to the corporation and not to Art?
Well, it is, it is awarded to the company, not the individual. And your original question I heard there, there was no discussion about the conflict of interest. I did send around to all the board members, all the VLCT guidance on conflict of interest policies.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to have a conversation outside of open meeting regarding that. Any, any conversations we had would have been during open meetings. It would have been during the last meeting where this was.
What do you think?
Okay, Art, can we join?
Okay, Art. Art Whitman's going to take the meeting over from this point.
Okay, the landfill, the methane vent floor is old, needs to be redesigned and we need to make a motion to allow Dave to enter into a contract with MSK Engineering to go ahead with the design and the, and the execution of it? Or are they just designing it?
They'll just be in charge of doing all the detailed work that's required through A and R. Our methane venting system is quite old, it was handcrafted by a former resident. So what we need is the engineering firm to determine the output, the type of blower we need, help us find the correct one, none of us are experts in hazardous materials, so that's what we're paying for. It's under $5,000, but we do need an expert. I wouldn't feel comfortable cobbling something together on something that's venting methane gas, so...
Is this just engineered or is this to put in, to reinstall everything?
It will be, if we have the option to have them help, but they believe that the design of the system and buying a real manufactured one would not be anything difficult to install. We will probably need an electrician because we did discover when this originally came down that some of the conduit is just plain getting all of the, some of the wiring. Be, now that this will be in a, a real blower system, we have to make sure the wiring too that was installed, what, 30 years ago, is still up to par for it, so... Again, this is why you need the engineering firm on something that's regulated by the state like this to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Entertain a motion to have Dave enter into a contract with MSK.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, so carry, 4-0-0. Okay, the next on the agenda is a letter of support to Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone. Federal designation as Economic Development District. That's part of this letter. Dave, what is that pretty much saying?
Uh, it might just be better to read that into the record. What this is allowing is this Southern Vermont Economic Zone. By us agreeing to it and the other towns that are served by it will be eligible for additional federal funding. That's, that's the short explanation of it.
Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone created by the Vermont Legislature in 2015 is made up of the 44 towns within the boundaries of the Wyndham County Betterment Development Credit Corporation and the Wyndham Regional Commission and the Regional County, Enniskin County Regional Commission. The town of Shasberry is in the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone. The first comprehensive economic development strategy for the Southern Vermont Zone was completed in 2019. The town of Shasberry supports the 2030 version vision of this Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone as home to resilient, creative and innovative community in which businesses and people thrive and prosper. And in the five CEDS priority actions to achieve the vision that were identified through the public process, increase the population, improve the physical infrastructure, enhance social infrastructure, expand business infrastructure and develop the zone's economic development capacity. Basically, and then it says the town of Shasberry supports the U.S. Economic Development Administration designing the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone as an economic development district. There's a lot of economic development in that, so... This, I guess, you want a motion or just consensus?
Uh, the point is to make a motion for you to sign that, it's giving the town's consent.
So I, with your vote, I will sign this as select, as select person and we're giving them our full-hearted support.
So I'll make a motion to give our support to the Southern Economic Zone?
Motion by Mike.
Okay, well, second?
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carry. Okay. Next on the agenda, constable compliance tracking. I guess we were, for the last few years, we were supposed to tell...
It was the first time we'd been notified of this statewide, this Blue VLCT. The Pivotal Justice Council has sent out a form here that I'm asking the board to let me fill out that just wants to know the status for our constables, their training, level of certification, summarizing their duties and everything else. This has never come around to us before. I guess maybe it should have been done by everybody in the state, but it doesn't seem like other than police departments this was being done. So with the board's permission, I will fill this out, saying that we have one constable with essentially no duties.
No training, no training and no duties.
Yeah, but we do have an elected constable, so we're obligated to fill it out.
Okay, make a motion for Dave to fill out the necessary paperwork to make that happen. Second?
We have a motion to have Dave fill out the form. Motion by Joe, second by Mike. Discussion? Did you have it?
Nope.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, 4-0-0. Okay, under other business, one of the things that we've got to do is we need, is it, would this be a vote of the select board to close Cleveland Avenue and to hire three sheriffs for that night?
Uh, right now, just seeking the authorization to, because I have to start the hiring process. The next meeting, we'll do the vote to actually close it. Make sure I have the right hours for the sheriff, but just a, even by consent. We hire three sheriffs every year for this for the last eight or nine years, so...
Seems to what, 5:30 to 9:00 normally?
Yeah, it's like 5:30 to 9:00. I, I think we moved it up to 5:00.
5:00.
Yeah, so they have four hours and, because it's usually dark around 5:00, but it should be by the end of the month. So it's the same thing we do every year, just want the board to know that we're going to go ahead with it.
Do we have consensus to let Dave enter into a contract or would it be, would it be an extra contract?
Yeah, it's just hiring overtime or not overtime, it's a special assignment.
Consensus, consensus, Joe? Tony, you okay with that? Okay. You have our, is there any other business? Action items, Dave is going to...
I'm sorry, Art, could I bring up something under other business?
Yes.
Um, it's about a potential accident. A week and a half ago, I was walking south on Culture Road and came right to the corner and a car came hugely speeding around that corner, which they do, the speeding is bad on Cold Spring Road. I think it might be worse on Culture Road because there's a big straightaway. And I thought I was going to be hit. The car couldn't move over because there was a pickup truck parked right at the corner. So I didn't dare jump into the ditch, so I just limped to the ditch. And fortunately, I was not hurt. And actually, the car stopped and apologized. But now with digging all the ditches, we've lost any shoulder of the road whatsoever. I know of another man who last year was jogging and fell into the ditch filled with rocks along Ellen Garrick's property, broke his wrist and had several lacerations, had to get emergency help. I have a couple of questions. What determines if the ditch is filled with rocks versus grassed, grassed in?
Uh, the state mandates that a slope of a certain 5% or more, I don't know...
I think it's 5% or more.
I think a slope of, I'm not sure about the 5%, but there is, there is a point at which if the slope is more, greater than, than this number, it has to be lined with, with rocks. The reasoning being that it slows down the flow of water so it can settle into the ground as opposed to rushing down through and creating a flood further on down thing. The whole idea of the ditches is to slow the, the water down so it has a tendency to go into the ground. We also are told by the state that we have to have a ditch at least usually about two feet below the surface, the traveled surface of the road. That allows the water that's underneath the road to, to go to the ditches as opposed to creating a problem within the road itself. So there's, there's, and also any culverts that are on the ditch, you've got to have the ditch at least to the bottom of the culverts. And the, the depth of the culvert is usually determined by the size of the culvert and that determines how much gravel or how much fill has to be put on top of it too.
Well, thank you. I mean, you can understand that this poses some danger
Yep.
to foot traffic, bicycle traffic, and I know eventually that a car is going into the ditch, you know? Is, what is the town's liability?
I, I don't think the town has any liability as long as we're doing what the state has asked us to do.
Okay. My, my last question is, years ago, the town used to have a contract with the Sheriff's Department for so many hours of patrolling a month kind of thing. So at least every once in a while, we saw a sheriff's car out here. As a matter of fact, years ago, even the state police used to patrol through every once in a while.
Yep.
Do we have any kind of contract with the Sheriff's Department for that now?
Yes, we do, it's in our budget every year. Do you know, what was the amount for this year's budget, for this year's contract?
I don't know that, I'll tap my head. What was it telling?
I think it's, isn't it 10 and a half hours?
Uh, it's something like 10 and a half hours a week or 10 hours a week. They haven't actually met lately. But it's a fixed amount. I know the troopers come around as they can and the sheriffs do get around. I do read the reports and they do do the traffic and they patrol.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking about all the roads that are concerned with lowering the speed limit. You know, would it ever be possible to increase the number of sheriff's hours? Or, I mean, I can't even remember the last time I saw a sheriff's car in the area where I live and I'm outside quite a bit. You know, is there any way to either, to both increase the hours that everyone's involved in the sheriffs to this part of Shasberry?
Absolutely, yes, we can, we have a contract with them, although sometimes they fail to give us the number of hours that they agreed to, but we don't have to pay, we only pay for what they do, do deliver, so to speak. But certainly in the next year's budget, it could be easily increased. All depends on, it's a voter's, voter's choice, yes. And we probably, probably should get on doing more about the fact that we did contract so many hours and we may not be receiving it.
Yeah, like, like everybody, they have a manpower issue. But we can direct them out that way westward. You know, I do read all the day sheets, so we can have them spend some time out that way.
Well, you know, I, safety is the number one concern for our town and our select board and our citizens and I think it's a big safety issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Make a comment, Art?
Yes, Tony?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's the result of the fact that we've improved the roads and consequently, this, people are speeding on better approved roads. And I agree with you that we need more sheriff coverage, but it is expected and so that increase will be reflected in the general budget. But I agree with you because I'm on a road that people use as a crossroad and because of the fact that it has improved in its quality, they are speeding much faster than they normally do. The speed ordinances are put in hopefully to stop that and they put the check up. Hopefully, they'll get stopped and will slow down, but that's probably only temporary until, you know, until they move on to another road.
Can I make a comment? Oh, sorry, Tony, thank you.
I was just going to say, you're done if you do, done if you don't, it's really a dilemma. We thought, we've, we've been watching this, you know, I've been watching the speeds go up on, on the roads because of the fact that they've been improved. So, you know, if people want improved roads, they want roads that they can travel on as opposed to the bumps and the, and the rock and potholes and, and those potholes and, and bumps help slow down traffic. help slow down traffic. So, we really are in a real dilemma. Um, you know, you, you please some people, and other people you don't. And I agree with you, walking on the roads, uh, be heard and be heard.
Yes. Um, I would just like to make a statement or a comment. Um, I'm Andrea Baki. Um, I'm also the chair of the ARPA committee, and I will say that one of the, uh, there was a couple of votes, or votes, excuse me, my apologies. There was some feedback about, about, you know, safety of the roads and, and having, um, more, uh, sheriff, um, you know, authority, um, surveillance, I would say. And that was of, uh, concern from the town's people, so it's really good for that here at this meeting as a resident. Um, so I do support what, um, Roberta and Tony are saying. Um, also, I wonder, would it make sense, this is just a thought, and I don't know what the select board or anybody feels, but is there any possibility, or are there already in the town cameras that are like, you know, the speed that catch people's dings, that, you know, that makes sense in the town, so that the police can monitor, see what's going on? I don't, I don't even know if that's an option in our...
I don't.
But I don't believe that's an option in the state of Vermont. Surveillance cameras are kind of frowned on. Uh, but, Tony, it's true, after being in this business for twenty-five years, you want people to obey the speed limit, but have to pay a lot of sheriffs and issue a lot of tickets. It's the only way you're gonna slow people down.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the bottom line. You can change the speed limit, but it's not gonna slow anybody down. Only a hard ticket slows people down. It's just great.
Okay, so it's, it's more of, it's more of having the, the, them parole in the area and, and think about that for the budget next year. And I agree, I think safety is, should be the number one, you know, safety first, right? And go to a, a job safety first in the town. I mean, if we want people to feel welcome here, I would hope that we would put that as a priority.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We'll be working on the budget very shortly.
Okay.
Okay, review of action items. Dave is going to, uh, the, enter into a contract with MSK. We signed the letter of support for the Economic Development Zone. Uh, we will be, uh, hiring sheriffs for closing up Cleveland Avenue, and I guess that's it. Is there anything else? We need to go into executive session to talk about legal issues, and then we'll be probably coming back, uh, to adjourn the meeting. So, at this moment, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. So moved?
Second?
I'm going to pause the sitting meeting, and we'll come back and pick it up, uh, to close out the meeting.
Okay.
Tony?
Back in the open meeting. Uh, is there a motion on the table?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Art to enter into a contingency for a possible real estate purchase, uh, which may cost us up to a thousand dollars.
To hold the property pending public discussions?
To hold the prop, to hold said property pending public discussions.
So moved? Second to that?
That was the, that was the first...
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
It's the second? Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Three zero zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Mike?
Second?
Joe? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
All right.